Regular meeting to order for Monday, January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Peck, please call roll.
John Creacher.
Here.
Pat McKee.
Yes.
Cody Nicolai. Jennifer Paoli.
Yes.
Joanna Reyes. Corey Sellers.
Here.
Lance Trollope.
Here.
Karen Vandenberg.
Here.
Jim Boucher.
Here. Thank you very much.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. And there are no community speakers for today, so we're going to move on to the next agenda item. Agenda item number six. I'm looking to approve the consent agenda. These are appointments, additional staff, replacement staff, contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, terminations, leaves of absence, retirements, regular session minutes of December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and special session of December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, payment to bills, budget status, and investment report, donations to the district. They are by Office Max, Amy and Claire So-Bizak, anonymous donors, ABC Supply, Blue Jacks Hockey, Troy and Judy Brown, the Knights of Columbus, Dennison Gale Krieg, Jody Krieg, Cheryl Jones, Saunter Builders, Kathleen Seidel, Wausau East Gridiron Club, Terry Waller, John Wortney, Roxanne Zaromski, and the Wausau West Diamond Club. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Agenda item number seven. Administration and Nexus will propose a timeline for next steps in the referendum construction process.
Everybody ready?
I'm up.
I'll start this up. I think, Josh, are you coming up for this?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good. All right, good evening, everybody. So I'd like to start this off by talking a little bit of background, start with our proposal, and then we'll work through how we got to that proposal. So, number of things, as you can imagine, that are, that go into this, in this decision making. Obviously, we've always got the, the budget challenges that we're cognizant of. We know there's interest in evaluating our elementary footprint. We're talking about the Wausau West multipurpose field tonight, so we want to talk about the ability of Jerry Johnson Field to be that field, consider the site work at Hawthorne Hills. We also have some secondary technology that needs to be updated, and we're going to talk about that within the context of referendum spending. And then lastly, we've already talked about the west elevator, but we want to confirm the direction on that from the board. So that's, those are some of the main things we've considered as we, as we consider, or as we, as we propose this next slide here. So, based on all that, and we can, and we're going to talk about the why, what we would propose in this, tonight, is that we would eliminate the work on the Hawthorne Hills Road. We would eliminate the, the work on the elevator at Wausau West. We would delay work at John Marshall for one year, and proceed with, obviously, the following here, but that would include Maine Elementary, G D Jones Elementary, Thomas Jefferson Elementary. Again, that's the safety and security, the original scope that was approved in the referendum. We would also propose that we do the parking lot and sidewalk work at Hawthorne Hills, and again, we're going to talk about that multipurpose field. Okay, so that's, that would be the proposal you'll see at the end of this. Next, okay. So here, so we'll talk about Wausau West Field, and I think, yeah, yeah, can we have Jeb and Jason come up? We, we want everybody to understand the context. So first of all, on the left with the big red letter, that's Jerry Johnson Field, just to make sure everybody's aware. And, and Jeb and Jason Foster are, are here tonight. They've been doing a lot of work about, around where this multipurpose field would best be located, so I've asked them to come and, and talk to the board about that. So, thank you.
So, based on the parameters in which we had, which was the scope of the referendum work, which includes a turf, multipurpose turf field that could be used for football, soccer, and lacrosse, and also includes lights, and that's kind of the scope of what currently exists, we looked at all sorts of different places. So we kind of started with Jerry Johnson Field, as that's kind of where our track, and we play our lower level football games right now. In that place in the middle, just to the east of it, is the, where we practice football right now, and then to the right, the heavily lined field there is our varsity soccer field with various things going on out there. So what we did is we brought together our user groups, brought our boys and girls soccer coaches, our football coach, as well as our department chair for FIAID, and talked about all the different things that it could and currently does, and potentially could be used for moving forward. And we kind of did the pros and cons of multiple different sites at that location. The reason we settled on Jerry Johnson is that we can, we can, we already have and can get a full turf football field in there. It'll fit a regulation lacrosse field, and it's really close to getting, if not for sure getting, a regulation soccer field in there. And if it's, if it's slightly narrow for the soccer, we could still play ga, we could still play all regular season games on it, and likely, potentially could still play our playoff games on it. If we couldn't play our playoff games on it, for whatever reason, we would still have our grass field to the east there. We could play one or two, usually there's one or two max before it goes to neutral field for soccer, so we could play those on the turf at Wausau East, as theirs is wide enough for that, where we could always look at renting the People State Bane Soccer Complex at that time. The pros to putting it at that site are the, like I said, the, the sports that can already be played on there. It currently does have a press box, it currently does have a fence around it, and it currently does have some bleachers, which are things that none of the other sites have. We don't currently have money in the scope to put any of those other things in now, which would make use, the use of those fields a little more challenging without those other things somewhere else. The other final real benefit to it is it includes lights, and one of the things we've always wanted is lights around our track. Right now, like this year, it's our turn to host the conference track meet in May, and we will have to bring in lights. We will rent lights from a vendor, and they will bring them in and set them up for that track meet. So it'll be nice to have those there. Also, once we hit October, the lower level football games and soccer games wherever that we play on there currently, we have to bump the start time of those up to four o'clock to ensure that we get done before we lose daylight, so having lights on that field would be beneficial there as well.
I just, I want to throw out a couple of things that we considered as well. So one of the reasons why we're getting a later start with the, with our sheet of turf is because we were, you know, with the restructuring and, and things, we were thinking there was some potential to have some other construction there with regard to a stadium and things like that. So one of the things we struggled with was, is there something coming that we should be considering when, when looking at this field and, and the placement of this field? Example, you know, if we were to build a football stadium or football soccer lacrosse stadium there, we would probably, in an ideal location, move it to the east, probably straddle some of the soccer field, and we'd have proximity to our parking. It would be more centrally located inside our property, I think, with the lighting and things like that in terms of our neighbors. But without having that, so I guess I wanted to throw that out there to let you know, we did consider a different placement, but without having kind of that long-term vision with some of those other things Jason mentioned in terms of bleachers and fences and, and that kind of thing, we felt that Jerry Johnson would be a place that, it would just be more conducive to what we're doing currently.
So why don't we start, because there's, like I said, there's several proposals at the end, why don't we take a topic at a time, and what about feedback on, on this proposal?
Open up to the board for questions.
Which slide, the proposed next step slide?
Just the west.
Just the west, though.
Yeah. Oh, and Cassie, can you go to the next slide? This is a, this is a drawing, I think this was done by Ross Rattler. The white outline you see is a regulation football field, and the black on the outside that Cassie's tracing there, that is a regulation soccer field, so you can see how it fits on the, on that space. Thank you.
It's very close, isn't it, to the track for soccer?
Mm-hmm. For the dugout sixty-five yard.
Jeb, can you just elaborate on, I guess I'm a little confused on, can you go back a slide, please, Cass? So if there was plans in the works to do something bigger in this middle part here, and that was deemed to be the ideal spot, why are we stepping back and putting it somewhere else that will work almost as good, but not going forward with what we thought was best to begin with? Because I thought that's what was sculpt from the beginning, in terms of location and all the functionality that went with it.
I know we talked, I don't know that it was ever set in stone in, in terms of the scope, the placement of the, the turf field, but I know that there was some, you know, initially there was some mockups because it was like right out the back door, and that's where it would be, because FIAID would use it then. I guess where we, when we had our conversations, the, the advantages, just without those extra things, the advantages outweighed kind of coming, right now anyway, and, and, and part of that discussion tonight would be, are we, are we looking at something? Should we be considering that there's something kind of coming that?
Yeah, I guess that, that's where I'm going with this. I don't understand the point of, for lack of a better term, dummying down what we were going to do because that was our original plan from the beginning, but now there's not.
That wasn't our original, our original was just a multipurpose field turf.
Our friend from Nexus, you were nodding your head in agreement that that was the original plan.
That was the original location, Sean, I'll refer it in the back.
In, in the middle.
Right, in the middle, yeah. It's a multipurpose field.
Yeah.
It's a practice field.
Correct, so that's.
Not a competition.
But not, but not with, not with a stadium and a press box and a.
Correct.
Just a sheet of turf. And no track around it or anything like that.
Just a practice field.
Okay, so then, in order to do what it is you were just talking about, Jeb, to get to that ideal state, I don't, whatever this, the stadium discussion is, forget about that, but to do the thing, is the lights and the bleachers, what does that add, scope wise?
That is the scope.
No, in, in the middle, where it was originally planned per the referendum drawing, if we were to put that Jerry Johnson Field, a full-size one, so you can get all your soccer games in on it, do the lights and the bleachers, what does that add to the scope?
We never did a, a, a stadium in the middle. We never did seating, it was just a field with lights.
So then, then what's the discussion about the stadium that was going to happen, but now is not?
Right, I guess the, when, when there was a rendering of, of potentially an indoor, and that's why we were holding off on, on a placement of this, because we didn't, obviously you don't want to put it down and then have to dig it up right away. What we, initially what this was, was going to be just as, as stated, just a sheet of turf, and, with lights. And I guess the discussion now, now that we're not moving forward, and there's likely not going to be something else in that area, we just felt we would have, if the sheet of turf was here, we would be able to use it.
But I'm confused, that, that there was never any money for a stadium, there was never anything in the referendum for a stadium either, so it's like we're dealing with something that got taken away that was never there.
Yeah, and I can say.
No, it wasn't there, Pat.
Right.
That's because I had brought up to, during West Design Meetings, about the possibility of flipping the field, and one reason would be to flip the field over to the east side as Jeb and Jason said, is because in the future, West needs an addition to its tech ad wing, and that green building's in the way, and the rendering that Nexus had done basically put it, the indoor facility on the green building, and then to the east of it, which is in the way of the new, if we put a wing on there, okay? So I'm looking, was looking some, the next step consolidation, that we need more tech ed space, maybe auto lab, right? Five, ten-year thing, but if I put stuff in the way, I can't do it later. Jerry Johnson is too skinny, there's no parking. I, I wouldn't be in favor, and I said it at the last meeting, of taking the money and, and putting the lights and the turf over there, when it's not the ideal facility. Why not put that money towards, and create a plan, if we have to do it in phases, we can do it in phases, but create a plan that's going to get us to where we need to be. Tom Field should come into this discussion as well, whether, you know?
I think, I agree.
So, the, the thing is, Pat, that there's been all kinds of little discussions all over the place, but not, 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 not the nine of us.
So the negative then, is if we do that, the negative is if we put it in the middle, we have a field that could be used for FIAID, that will have no seating, it will have lights, but we will not have lights on track, on the track. So the problem of having to bring in lights for track and having to start things early, that won't be solved.
That's true.
But it, it, future proves it a little bit more if, if you're thinking that there might someday be an expansion over here, works for soccer. So I mean, there's good and bad to both, but I can see why, I can see why the, the good sort of outweighed it by putting it on Jerry Johnson Field, because there's seating to watch the games, the lights would serve the dual purpose of not only helping the field sports, but also track. I mean, do we, do we?
It has pluses. Absolutely.
Do we avoid having, having seating and having lights for our track with the hope that, like someday there might be more in the middle?
Well, it will always be a hope unless you create a plan and you start going out and talking to people about it. And I'm saying that if you, it, at some point down the road, you know, I, I had talked to Dr. Hiltz and Nexus Group about something for at Tom Field, they did have a plan together, it didn't get in, you know, into the scope at all. I love the history, it's important, but, you know, spending four and a half, five, six million over Tom Field, does that make sense for the community? So that's a discussion and something the community should be asked about. And if there's others that.
Just to be clear, we're not spending four and a half million over at Tom Field, that was just something that.
That was just an idea way back.
Yeah.
Yes, a couple years ago, thank you for clarity.
But we're still talking about spending one point seven million in what could be?
On lights and turf. That could possibly be torn up.
As a short-term plan.
Could I, could I suggest that if we, one of the things I like about, there's many things about, I like about this plan. Let's say we do this, and then some years down the road, we find the money, right, to create a, a stadium to the right. To have two enclosed turf fields, both of which could be used for training and for competition, is not wasteful. So I don't, I don't think Jerry Johnson gets in the way of any future plans, that's another reason I, I like this proposal.
Yeah, and just to clarify one thing, Pat, I guess I didn't mean to state we had the stadium and it was coming.
No, no, no.
And we, now that we're not getting it, we were considering, like, if that should come, would this be smarter to place it here? So I didn't mean.
Understood. No, 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 I, I'm, I'm totally with you on that, but I get.
Well, and that, the reason that discussion started is because of the idea of combining the high schools, so that this would be the senior high location, and if this ended up being the senior high location, it was much more likely that there would be some sort of stadium type of field there.
Like, that was my question, is what are your thoughts on, you know, because like you said, Dr. Hiltz, I mean, five, ten years from now, we could be in that situation, all the data and information that's been presented over the last couple of years points in that direction, so if we do that work there at the current field, you know, can we expand, you know, upon the stadium piece of it, not just the field, right? And it sounds like there's a concern with soccer being able to be played there, and I, I don't know, you know, do we have three inches of turf left before you hit track or a foot, or?
Well, then, if, anytime you put your soccer field inside a track like that, the soccer ball's going to roll onto the track, like that's just, I mean, if you've been to several games on Wausau East new field this year, and people are constantly just chasing soccer ball across the track, so how close you come to it is a little bit irrelevant. I mean, this one is, you can, we will be able to play everything we need to be able to play on this field. If you back up just a little bit, and we talk about where it is where I was not part of any, this predates me as athletic director, but I was not part of any decision that had kind of, or any conversation that was going to put one's field to the east there. When I came on board, there was a rendering, I'm not saying anybody approved it or anything like that, but there was a rendering that included an indoor facility to the east, and completely redoing and making that a football stadium, not that anybody had ever approved anything, so it essentially at the time made either spot. You didn't want to put it down because the, the rendering that existed included tearing up that track, putting down a brand-new track, brand-new stadium, brand-new field, everything.
No, and I think you have, when you're looking at the footprint of this, you, you should consider those things, right? We should be dreaming, we're the thirteenth-largest school district in the state, and, you know, you look at Marshfield and all these other.
Right.
Small school districts around us that have been able to put together some pretty impressive.
Right.
Facilities, you know, whether it's private funding or a mix of both or whatever, but we should be, in this backspace, be planning for what we want for the future, for our facilities, right?
Absolutely, yeah, for sure.
And what's that, what's the best layout for that?
And to answer that question, I don't know for sure what the best layout, it's definitely worth the conversation, I guess. The conversations we had that have led to this were very much tied to much of the conversations I've heard here at board meetings, is making sure at this time and, that we're sticking to the scope of the referendum, because we do not have extra dollars. So I, I love, I would love to sit down and talk about future and where things might go, and what is the best place to put things, I think that's great, but those things could be anywhere from five to ten years down the road. So if you're talking about putting down a piece of turf now, and then coming back and retrofitting a stadium around a piece of turf that's anywhere from three to five to seven, maybe ten years old, that's not how anybody does it either. I guess to me, when I look at this space right now, I think this is the best space, and talking to our user groups to put it right now for what we have sitting in front of us from a resources standpoint, and then we could, we should certainly look at talking about what is the long-term plan for Tom Field? What is the long-term, if we brought them onto both campuses, what does it look like? What would you have to put into Wausau East, what would you have to put into Wausau West? That's kind of, that's just the mindset that we took when we came to getting Jerry Johnson.
And one of the first things I'm going to say is that, this is the first time I've heard you come to us and say that you would see the perfect place as the stadium, if there was a stadium, on the east side, closer to the parking lots and things of that fashion. Right now, you just stated this, Lance, and the fact is, if we put lights and turf on that right now, we don't lose a season. We actually get that down, and we, we will have track and field run there. We will have that always to be used in the future. It will always be available for lower-level games. It will always be there, and it's not that we're going to be end-all right there, because it's too small, it's too narrow. I've gone through that with Tom Field when I was a track coach there, it's too small to, to do that. So now hearing your comment, just for the, where we're at, get it done, takes care of lacrosse, takes care of soccer, takes care of track and field, and takes care of football, then whenever that year comes about where we eliminate Tom Field, create a stadium that's a twenty-first century stadium here, it's on the east side by the parking lot. That's the first time I've heard this. So we have talked about that, I've talked about it with coaches and said, go to Jason and talk to him about it. So now, at least you're putting a plan together where this will take care of the immediacy, and now we can start looking down for scope down the road.
Yeah, I think having, having a second sheet of turf someday, a decade from now, wouldn't be a bad thing.
No.
To have two, I don't think this would be wasted. Another thing to throw out there is if, if this dream ever came, became a reality, and we had this stadium area in a field there, if it, if we also had this turf multipurpose field to the side, then the stadium one, the, the one for the games wouldn't even necessarily have to be turf. It might not be. It might, it might be natural grass if it's, if the only thing it's used for are games and it's kept in pristine, I mean, that's one of the reasons we've, we're favoring turf in this location, is because you can't keep it a nice playing surface, because it's used for everything. So maybe someday there's a second sheet of turf, or maybe it's not, maybe it's, maybe it's a, a field that's protected only for games.
And what you just said, or not, is true. I mean, now you have options, what you can do with that. A lot of big schools right now are putting two slabs of synthetic turf down, one for a practice lower level, and then on their stadium. That's being done even in smaller districts than we are, and so we need to be looking that, that will take us to the next step, if that step comes.
Yep.
And that's what we've been talking about, we want to be able to go to the next step without tearing up anything we've done in the past.
In a perfect.
Because that's a waste of money.
In a perfect world, if you, if you have the choice, like Amherst just did this, Eau Claire North is considering what to do right now with theirs, is in a perfect world, your stadium turf, or your stadium sheet of grass or turf or whatever it ends up being, is better if there's not a track around it. So if we have a good track here, and we have lights, and we have everything we want there, when it comes time to build a stadium, you, you would, could certainly consider not putting a track around it, which would A, save you money, and B, brings your stadium closer to your field, and makes it a better viewing experience and for everyone.
As is in Marshfield, as is, Nina, when they built theirs, they do have a track around it, but it's a very big track so that they can play soccer in there, so.
This track was just resurfaced recent, not too long ago, right?
Just resurfaced a couple years ago, yeah. So we don't need action on that, but I want to make sure the board gets, any other questions on the, the west?
No, I think it's very good that you two are here to let us know that you've been thinking about immediacy and then a plan going down the road.
Wouldn't we at some point tonight take action on this proposal, which includes this, though?
Yes, I, I was, I was hoping the board would just take one action.
Right.
At the end, if we want to cut things out, we certainly can, or?
No, no, I just want to clarify that.
Yes, we will.
That is part of the action later.
And my last point would just be that anytime anybody here wants to sit down and talk about what the future would look like, we could happily either do it one-on-one or put a group together and sit down and start kind of brainstorming what that might look like as well.
And I guess that's my point, I think we should have that before we commit to spending almost two million dollars on something that could be part of a larger picture, to Corey's and John's point.
I would just say. That far, Pat, because if you take a look at it right now, we already, you are already talking about how this could immediately help us. Now, we hold on that, and now we're holding for another two, three, do we hold for another four, how about another five years? When do we finally get it done? We have a lot of students that could be using that, we have marching bands, although I'm hoping that there should, there would become a marching band at West, so that we could, could have a marching band. They would be using that a lot, your FIAID classes are going to be using that academically. I mean, you can go down a series of academic reasons for using synthetic turf, because it becomes very flexible, and it's not going to be torn up like normal grass will be. Am I wrong in that? Okay.
Can I just ask a question about the usage of the field? So you met with some of the coaches, obviously, from the big players. Will this then be the location for just practices for football? Or this is where, like soccer games, season conference games?
Varsity soccer games, lower-level football games, could be lower-level soccer games, we could do a five, seven, like right now, we could play them simultaneous, because we don't have lights on our varsity soccer field, or we don't have any lights except our new ones on our baseball and softball right now at West, so it would get used, I would say the, the less, in the springtime, it would be used a ton for practice. In the fall season, I would say, practice would probably be the least thing that happened on it, that would be mostly be used for games, because as we sit right now, and you're not home every week, but JV football plays on Mondays, JV two football plays on Thursdays, soccer plays Tuesdays and Thursdays, so I would say two to three nights a week, you'd have games on it.
Sure, okay. And lacrosse located there as well then for games?
Yeah, in the springtime, yep.
Interesting, great, thanks.
Jim, this is really just about being able to have the conversation amongst us, so I wasn't necessarily suggesting that we wait years, but if the conversation says not to wait years, okay, but if there's a, something that our Nexus staff tells us, you know, I thought maybe we had, based upon the other conversations, maybe we had till the end of February to make a yes or no on this, so.
This is the only place that we can have our conversation, so we're noted for it.
Well, that's, I understand that, Lance, I understand that.
What else do we need to discuss about it?
About possible layouts.
I, I, I'll add this too, there's been a number of conversations about athletics and fields over the last number of years, just since I've been here, which is only, you know, five and a half. Nexus has helped us do potential, you know, work at Tom Field on, on various levels. They've helped us design a possible stadium right on this Jerry Johnson Field. We haven't designed a, a stadium to the right, partly because there's some major drainage, water drainage to the right, so there's been some pretty extensive conversations.
So there's been some pretty extensive conversations about athletics at West and at East. Within the, the scope of the referendum that we have right now, this is what, the, the single turf field here plus the two ball diamonds were what we thought was best for now. If the board has an interest, I would agree. I think it would be an exciting conversation to talk about, you know, what to do, what's the best use of that remaining space, you know, years forward. We've got some good partners that can help us do that.
I think if we had, i- if this was going to be the senior high, I would support holding off and waiting. Because then I would, then I would think that moving away from Tom Field and having a stadium type of thing here isn't just a pipe dream. But with us moving forward with two different high schools, I don't think there's any chance of us moving away from Tom Field and building two different stadiums, two different football, soccer, lacrosse complexes at two different high schools anytime within the next 10 years. And so, i- five years for sure. Five years for sure. And so, to me, I think getting this down now with the lights, so that track can make use of the lights as well, and having it down now, and then, I, I'm not against having conversations over the next several years about doing something more in the middle. I don't see this as a waste at all. I- i- if we at some point get to a position where we have another field there, whether it's turf or not and a stadium, and we don't have to build a track around it, because our track already exists and has lights, I think that's a plus. I don't think we save anything by waiting.
Is that track an eight lane? It's, it's an eight lane. I mean, so it's a substantial lane track that WIAA acknowledges. So consequently, you're right, we need to look at what are we gonna do immediately for our students versus holding off and doing that, a pipe dream of a stadium.
For 1.8 million, we better be able to have all soccer games there, playoffs included.
Oh, absolutely.
You have
I don't know if the playoffs, because WIAA plays a big part in that.
Seeding now. So you're gonna add some bleachers on the other side? You got no place for a visiting team to sit at this field. You barely have enough for the home team. That's part of the discussion, too. And, yeah, I sound frustrated, because you, it's like you guys don't want to wait two weeks to actually have a discussion and see some layouts.
I don't think we can get layouts in two weeks.
I have some right here in my bag.
I was gonna say, wasn't there layouts? It sounds like there was already discussions about a stadium. There's ram and whereas.
I added on to the tech ed wing, I put more parking, I changed the tennis courts. Took me all 15 minutes.
Making the drawings is the easy part. Coming up with the $30 million referendum you just proposed is the hard part.
Hey, man, there may not be a referendum. But you gotta have some kind of plan first to talk to people in community that want to potentially donate to it. We're the only school in the conference, you know, that doesn't have a turf field. Everybody else has new stuff. How'd they get it done? Having a plan? Talking to people. And we're not doing it. And we might, too.
We, we moved that, we moved, we, we took that off the table. We, we made a vote that said that was the one option that isn't being considered. So I think we have to go forward, assuming that that is not an option, since this very board said that's not an option.
Yep.
And if that's not an option
Are you gonna separate this from the motion?
It's not gonna happen.
Are you gonna have this as a separate motion?
The current field layout.
There's a motion at the end that combines all these things?
We can, we can definitely split that up.
Sure. Yeah. How about if we carry on, and we can come back when we get to the motion? Thank you very much. So, I know this is hard to read. I'm gonna talk through it. Josh and Russ from Nexus will, will help me. You might want to look on your own screens, or the people who are watching. Cassie's gonna help me try to identify what we're talking about here. So down the left side are all of the schools or properties that have projects. The next column to the right is the year 2023, next column's 2024, next column 2025. Okay, so stopping, starting at the upper left is Hawthorne Hills Elementary. As you recall, part of the original work was a road and some site work. So when you look at the colors, what we're trying to show to everybody is where the original work was planned, and the dark blue and the gold would be the new proposed planning. And then the, call it turquoise to the right, would be the construction timeframe. So, for instance, with Hawthorne in the upper left. Originally, we, we were going to do that, the, the road and everything together, but with the conversation about a possible early learning center, we delayed the road and the site work. So you heard earlier, we would propose that we would not do the road, so we split out the road from the parking, and you'll see costs later. So if you, whichever of those you propose to do, we will start, well, Nexus will start to redesign those, complete that design, build those this summer. So that would be our proposal for Hawthorne. Going down one row, what's that next one, Cassie? East and West High School, we're already, you know, we know what we're doing there. We're, we're designing that, and the construction would start, Russ, is that this summer? Am I reading that? The summer and the following summer, because that work
For East and West High School, West Fields, Phase Two.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Okay, yeah, West, yes, thank you. Next one down, I think, is Horace Mann and Montessori. I think we're familiar with what's going on there. The, the decision to put Montessori back at Hawthorne only delays the completion of that project, as you see to the far right, by one month. So we're in good shape there. Next one down, help me with that? That's East High School. Okay, so East is already, we're, a couple of months of design work, and we will, will be, we've, we've got a couple of months of delay there again for some changes, but we're in good shape with East.
The construction that are actually finished is a little bit earlier than originally planned.
Thank you. Then we get down into, so that's our secondaries. Then we get into our elementaries. What we would propose, we're currently designing Jones and Jefferson. They're already in, in design. That's, yeah, thank you, Cassie. The next one down is Maine. We haven't been designing that, but we would propose to start that design if the board is, approves work on those three elementaries. Jones, Maine, and Jefferson. We would propose to delay work on Marshall. You see that, all right? That was the original plan. If we want to continue that, we certainly can. We would propose to move that out a year with the other remaining elementaries. That's the time we want to give the board to make any decisions about elementary footprint. I know I said a lot there, and I know you can't read that very easily. So essentially, what we're saying is, do the site work at Hawthorne. Let's start doing Maine this, Maine, Jones, and Jefferson this summer. Delay Marshall and the other elementaries to give the board time to make some decisions about elementaries. Let me pause there, and Russ, and Sharon's on line two, if we have questions about this.
Didn't you guys say last time that you were gonna hopefully create, like, group all three of these together to make it, like a, like if one contractor, they would get all three sites?
And for best pricing, yes, that's, that is still the case, and so the thought would be, last time, J.D. Jones, Jefferson, and Marshall were together, and after that discussion, we moved Maine instead of John Marshall, or proposing to move Maine instead of Marshall. And again, the scope is not a huge amount, 150,000 or whatever it is, not a huge amount of scope, more security and secure entrances. Those would all be grouped together.
Right, and there's very little, well, I shouldn't say very little, but it's like secure entrance at J.D. Jones and Jefferson mainly, right? Are, are the scopes? Can you ju- just review the three scopes? I'm, I'm questioning Maine, I just want to remember what's going on there.
We had that last time, I don't have that with me, right? We had the sheets last time, I don't have it in front of me, but it's secure entrances, access to the office, and then a little bit more at, at Jones, kind of going into the office.
Would you like me to add to that?
Thank you, Sharon, yes.
All right, so at J.D. Jones, we're, like Russ was saying, we're doing a secure entry and a couple small ADA corrections with cameras, things like more. At Jefferson, we're looking at adding a parking lot to the southwest corner of the site for the kindergarten or the lower school, lower grades access. We're remodeling the student services area, the front, front office, to get a secure front entry, and some miscellaneous ADA throughout the building, and some other, like, maintenance and those types of things. At Maine, what we're looking like at doing is a secure entry. There's a fire lane that we're looking at, working with the fire department and a few other folks to see what that's all about, sort of into the site a little bit, and then some other maintenance and security options. At Marshall, what we were looking at doing is adding in a pickup and drop-off lane for the parents on the south side of the building, the secure entry, some ADA items, and some other site work that, a new generator, things like that. So nothing's too terribly complicated, but Jefferson does have the most interior rework. Out of the projects, we're, out of that, those four, that one has the biggest scope of work.
Thank you for clarifying, Sharon.
You're welcome.
So then what, what's the rationale for wanting to do the half million dollar site work at Hawthorne? I mean, given the discussions that have to happen about elementaries, I mean Hawthorne alone had a 14% decrease in enrollment this year. Why do we want to spend a half million not knowing what its future may be? The thought would be to increase parking, would add about, from, would add about 40% more parking, and also allow more cars to queue up during drop-off as well, so it would make it work, the site would work better and the drop-off would work better for the upcoming years, while you're considering the long-term implications.
And, and in addition, what we're trying to do is move projects forward that we're fairly certain wouldn't be impacted, as soon as we can to avoid inflation, and, and put off those that were more likely to be impacted. We can certainly change these if, if
No, I mean, I'm, I'm glad to hear that answer, frankly, because increasing parking 40% on a school that had enrollment drop 14%, to me is an easy one to say, no, don't do that yet. I could very easily see that some of those students going to John Marshall and increasing John Marshall parking, or whatever the case is. I just don't think that that's money well-spent at this point in time.
Parking, of course, is for parents, right? I mean, and it's inadequate right now, so we're trying to meet current need with that.
Well, there's 14% fewer students, so it alleviated itself somewhat. And that is why we split that out, so that you can decide one or the other. We're, we're good either way.
Okay.
You know, the, the concrete sidewalk repair is something we definitely would recommend. It was like $37,000, because that's breaking up, right? It could be a safety issue.
Yep.
But we're, I mean, we're, we're just presenting the data for you to make a decision.
One of the things we talked about the last meeting was if we take the road out, which I, it's so expensive, I'm not sure how we, how we avoid that. Is, is there a way to make the traffic flow better? Does any of this improve that, or is it actually just parking? Because I agree with Pat, it doesn't seem we need to add much parking if enrollment is declining, but does it impact the traffic flow?
You know, I, the, it, it does add an outlet, correct, Sharon?
Well, I can take that from here. So what we're looking at right now, it's not been fully designed or anything, but preliminary concepts is to be able to pull as many cars off of kick push as we can and get them to loop through the parking lot. So there is ways to pull maybe another, you know, 25% of the cars, like, I think there's 22 spots for 22 cars in the old parking lot right now. We can increase it up, you know, up to 30, 30-plus percent to be able to just keep trying to get those cars off the road, so it allows for better traffic flow moving forward, along with the additional parking. So if you look at it as a goal to just get cars off the street, there is the ability to do that, but we wouldn't, we would need to go into design a little bit further to be able to quantify what that actual impact might be.
And you said there's, there's 22 spaces now, and this would increase it by 30%?
About, correct.
So that's about seven spaces?
No, it's more than that, but we're trying to work through the, I'm being vague on purpose, because we're trying to work through how the bus flow works with the traffic flow to make sure that we're not creating any safety issues. So I'm being conservative just to make sure that we don't overpromise.
There's 38 spaces currently. We'll get 54-plus new spaces. There's currently space for 22 buses, so we're 30, so the parent drop-off would include, would get us up to 30. And if I remember correctly, I, we should have maybe that drawing up here again, we covered it last time, but also with that, didn't it also provide another exit out of the parking lot, Sharon? There was all, there was one entrance in and out, now you could flow, and there'd be one in and one out to the main street, so.
And, and to build on what Russ is saying as well, is the original West parking lot, you know, we're not, we chose not to do any work there, because they have a good bus flow on the East parking lot, and so that could also be considered as part of the full parent pickup and drop-off. So separated from the buses, to be able to get, again, the goal is to get as many cars off the road as possible, and, you know, to hope, help free up that street for other, you know, safety for car passage, ambulance passage, things like that.
But again, it's there, it's split out for your consideration. Yeah. I just think that it's, I, I just don't like the economics of spending money on any building that is in question. Whether that be it grows more than what we expected, you know, through consolidation or less, whatever the case may be, I think until we have those answers, we table the spending on, on all of those, but that's
I would agree with that, Pat. I think, I think that that work could be dropped down into the category of the other schools that are pushed out a year to give us time to work through
On all the elementary projects? I just want to make sure I'm hearing you.
No, I, I think there's other projects that you went through at Jones, Jefferson, Maine.
Specific to the height, the site work at Hawthorne? Okay, thank you.
What about that? I agree, except the sidewalk sounds like that needs it, though.
Yeah, it sounded like it was a safety issue for $44,000, but
Yeah.
Remove the Hawthorne parking.
I think that makes sense for now, until we know what's happening with our schools.
Let's move on.
The last time we were together, the board asked for a breakout of the Hawthorne Hills site work that we were just talking about, so this is that breakout. It sounds like we are comfortable for the moment putting a pause on the road and the parking lot expansion while we answer the questions that are in front of us. Is that a fair summary? Any questions on this? This also includes all those updated budget numbers that we saw last time.
And, and there was also a request last time to spread out some of the, the grant work and some of the John Marshall. We're working on that, too, as, as we move into that next phase, we can provide those split outs, too, so that you can make decisions as well.
So I know this is, it sounds like maybe potentially this is changing or being broken out, but this would be the total for the, the upcoming work, the next chunk that we're talking about, that $3.7 million, and then just clarifying what the savings would be by not doing the road at Hawthorne. Sounds like the, the majority of the rest of that work may be put on hold for the moment as well. This is the budget we looked at last time, that $5.6 million number, where we are $5.6 million short. That includes all the updated estimates and moving back to original scope, and then this is what it would look like if we did not do the road specifically at Hawthorne Hills. But that's the only thing taken into consideration. This doesn't take into consideration any of the conversations we've had tonight. Any questions on the budget numbers? Please, go ahead.
Sorry, Josh, I'm, can you go back?
Yep.
The community room storage at West, is that in or out?
That is, that's in. It's in the, this number, yes. It's included in this number.
It's in the plan right now.
So I don't want to be wrong here, but it was, it was definitely in the original scope.
Right.
That should have been included. It was bid as an alternate. I don't remember if the board has taken official action on that alternate bid, which should have been a non-alternate bid. Did that make sense?
Is the 1.2 million
It's in the number, yes.
Okay.
It's in the number.
So the 1.2 is included? Yeah.
Can we finally put that thing to bed in some form or fashion, Cory? I mean, you're the West
I'm, I'm in favor of it. I've always been in favor from last February.
I just didn't want to say anything without
Understood.
Having an official motion.
When we, when we last talked about it, one of the reasons I said I wasn't yet in favor, I was in favor, but I wasn't yet ready to vote for it, is I wanted administration to come to us and tell us about this FFNE. And what, what, what are the priorities from admin's standpoint of that money versus this, because of this community room? Because at some point, we're deciding, like, both things are good. So which one is better? And, and I think we're getting some of that tonight. They're telling us, this is, this is some of the stuff we need to do. And so I will be comfortable moving forward with spending, you know, 1.2 million, which is $900,000 more than when we originally, I talked about it. If that's coming out of FFNE, and admin is comfortable that we have that, we have that room within the FFNE that, you know, we're not, we're not losing something really critical there. we're not losing something really critical there.
Can I ask a question, Josh? So just to clarify, with the updated budget number, this is showing three point oh five nine over, correct?
Correct.
And you're showing, but that does not account for if we remove the parking lot from Hawthorne Hills, which would be an extra, um, half million, almost, four seventy-ish. Okay, so that takes us to maybe two and a half, two point six.
Two point six.
Okay. And then one of the mitigation efforts listed is the elimination of the road. But isn't that already eliminated from that?
So that's a good question. I was going to talk through this when we got to the slide, is that?
So that's no longer a mitigation effort?
This, this slide includes the road not being in there. But I wanted to give you the total picture of what all mitigation efforts would look like because no official action has been taken. Does that, is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just confused because I thought, wow, I thought that was already taken out. Okay.
And, uh, to, just to echo that point, there's eight point one seven six million listed here available in FFNE and technology. And the next slide is a description of a technology need, so that is also not taken into account in that number. This is the number right now, assuming nothing's been done. Any other budget questions?
The reason I described it as FFNE and not other things like the Hawthorne Hills parking lot or, um, the grant money is because in, this is my opinion. Since we do not have any plan in place right now to consolidate any elementary schools, I think all of those funds have to be protected. Because if that school stays as a school, you know, we need that grant money, we need that Hawthorne Hills money. So that's why my mind was focused more on the FFNE. Let's pull from FFNE to cover this community room if we can. As opposed to taking money out of a building that we might then later need a year from now.
And just an update on that, you know, we talked last time about assessing each of the school buildings from an FFNE perspective. That's been going on all day today. Natalie is with us from our office going through, Keith was there, Josh was there, walking through the buildings. Uh, made it through, however, May or today, and then the rest are tomorrow. And then we'll put together a list of what needs to be improved in those district, uh, into those buildings and then come back with a similar list where you can select and unselect and see how that all works out, so.
Thank you. That, that's the biggest thing that I had, was if we're going to call from FFNE. You know, we have eight point one million dollars in there, eight point two. Bottom line is how much can we take from there to take one point two for the, uh, the community room? And then still have approximately seven million or seven point whatever million. How much do we need in FFNE is going to be a very important aspect here.
Correct.
Because we don't want to keep on taking from that, putting it over here and then come to the end and say, oops, we shouldn't have done that.
And just to clarify, the FFNE or furnishings, fixtures and, and equipment for the work in the additions as well as the renovated areas, that's still in the budgets up above.
Mm-hmm.
What we're talking about is district-wide beyond the areas that are affected by the overall construction and renovations is what's being evaluated right now. And kind of building it from the bottom up and see what, what would be recommended, then bring that for your consideration.
Kind of coming from a zero-based budget versus, here's your money, let's use it type of thing. Thank you.
So can you clarify then, what is actually remaining that we can leverage from the FFNE budget? It's, it says up to eight point one seven six, but then beneath that, it talks about what remaining is three point three eight six.
Good question. So we have, um, I'll go through all the slides. Eight point six million dollars originally in the FFNE budget, right? And then we have the eight point one seven six listed because we've spent four hundred and thirty-eight thousand and fifty dollars to date. So that three point eight two five number, that is only the technology portion of the district-wide FFNE budget for the referendum. Any others?
The other half is furniture?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and then there's a very small discretionary, but yes.
And that's the detail that we need on the technology and the furniture to your point, so we can make those decisions.
So it sounds like you'd like to see that number as preemptive to any additional decision making?
This is the third largest expenditure in the overall referendum plan. The detail behind that is critical to make informed decisions.
Mm-hmm. And that's the planning that's going on right now as we speak, so that's fair.
Yeah, that way we can have that community room as an action item, whether it's the next meeting or the one after that. And just, and then we can stop talking about where it maybe could come from, just say, we made the decision.
Yes.
Now, now the FFNE number is different because we've taken it out of there, if, if that's what we do.
Okay.
And what we did conceptually with the FFNE number, just to kind of roll back time on, on the referendum is thirty percent of the district spaces that were not part of the affected, so it was a, a budget across the district that was used as an FFNE allowance. Now we'll build it from the bottom up to see where it lands again, so, so it's more, um, it, it's more precise per building.
Good.
Uh, so the only, go ahead.
As I say, so we should talk a little bit about this proposed secondary devices. So there are some needs that we, we know we have, the impact, um, student programming. Um, and Mr. Uding can probably speak, um, most knowledgeably to it. Um, but we would like to spend an additional four, give, get permission to spend up to four hundred thousand dollars from this budget to replace some secondary devices. John, could you let the board know what you're looking at?
Yeah, roughly about four hundred Windows desktops between the four secondary schools that are split into labs that are five years old, they fit into our replacement cycle, that's when we take care of it. So those are the devices along with, uh, some replacement Windows desktops for the admin assistants that are aged out also with that. So they're, they're labs, they're not classroom teacher devices, they're, they're the labs, PLTW, things like that.
How many labs do we have at West and how many labs do we have at East? Stationary labs?
That, I would have to, I could hazard a guess on the number of labs, I would say. I, I, before I speak on the number of labs, I'd want to get that for you. I know between the four sites, there's about four hundred devices.
Right, and I, I come back with that question pertaining to the fact that every student has a device that we give them to begin with. And then these are extra labs that have more powerful, um, motherboards and things of that fashion so that they can do the high-end software, correct?
Correct, yes. These are, these are labs that might run, uh, Microsoft Office training. They might be doing more video processing for some.
Or CAD work and that.
CAD work, yes, and they're in the tech ed labs and things like that. So they're, they're devices that are used that a normal Chromebook might not support that kind of learning for. Wherever we can, we reduce those labs when a Chromebook can meet that software need or meet that ability or, or, or need.
Good, that was the answer to my next question.
Yeah.
And then we start eliminating them.
A, a Windows desktop replacement is a thousand bucks?
A Windows desktop, right now, the quote we have is around eight hundred. I think at the time we just said up to, to make sure we had an amount that was there, not saying that's exactly it. We, we wanted to give you the up to amount.
But you're talking the hardware, we're, you're, you have to include the software that I had too.
Uh, right now, our licensing with, with Microsoft would be a separate, would be out of the technology department budget. Because we're replacing the, the devices, so we have the licenses and things taken care of. It's the device itself.
Good. I think you can get them at Best Buy for half that, but.
Well.
We can check it.
I could give you the quotes from our, our dealer and the educational model that we need.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Uh, so the only remaining slide is the sample motion out.
Talk about that Wausau West elevator. That's one piece that we haven't discussed yet, is last time, remember, we had talked about the original budget that was thrown out was a partial budget. I'm not sure where that number came from, to be honest with you, but it was a hundred and seventy thousand. As we started to get into design, there was some, an, an additional structural that had to, that had to happen along with, um, the roof that, that handles the second floor had to be carried over. And it turns out to be more like around three hundred and fifty thousand to do that additional lobby for the elevator. We, um, Nexus, um, don't feel that the value is there at this point to, to, to move forward with that and just go back to the original footprint as it was and, um, and then move forward. And then in the future, if that second and third floor are added, um, it would just, um, it would just have a jog. Um, and then you, a, a jog as opposed to a straight line for a, for a hallway up above. And you could still fit the elevator lobby in there, so we just felt it was, um, too expensive and that's why we brought it for the board to consider and most, um, agreed with that and you just wanted to formalize it, so.
Yeah, we just weren't listed for action last time, so we couldn't do it.
Right, yeah. So we tried to, to be very specific, you know, in this motion. So what we're proposing is that timeline, that Gantt chart. Um, obviously, we are, we understand some of the changes you want to make and we'll specify those. So the elementary projects, but we would not include Hawthorne Hills, except for the sidewalk, we do the sidewalk. We would propose to do the Walt, the, the West multipurpose field at the Jerry Johnson site. Uh, the technology device replacement is what Mr. Uding just described. And we're also proposing to eliminate the footings at Wausau West for that elevator and the road at Hawthorne Hills. And we would add then the parking lot at Hawthorne Hills. That's what we're proposing to, that's the direction we're looking for to move forward.
Is, are the footings for the second and third floor at West still in or out?
Yes, they're in.
They're in?
Yeah.
At the half million dollars?
Yes, that's already been designed. That can be added in the future. This was a small bump out that turned to be out, be a lot more costly than originally anticipated.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we put the motion out?
Yeah, are you putting it in three motions or are you doing all in?
It's up to you. How do you want to break it out?
Is the only question the, the multipurpose field part?
Well, you're changing this one because you're eliminating the parking lot as well, just doing sidewalks.
So what are you proposing?
I'm simply, I'm, I'm, I'm just, Jim, I'm asking to separate out the West stuff. I'm opposed to spending the money at West and rather would have that as a separate motion. Uh, the other things, uh, eliminating the parking lot is fine with me and leaving the sidewalk in is fine. So the, the rest I'm okay with. That's all I'm asking.
So basically we're breaking it into two. Do you want to comprise quickly?
Hey, I can. Let's start with the Wausau West multipurpose fields. There'd be a motion to place the, the turf multipurpose field at the Jerry Jo, Jerry Johnson field. That's the motion.
Is, I have a question. Corey, is the, is the purpose of pulling it out because you believe there's additional information that could be brought forward to the next meeting for us to consider? Or is it just, because based on what I've heard today, I, I, I think the pros outweigh the cons with the proposal. But I'm not opposed to waiting a couple of weeks if you think there's additional information that would, that would change my mind.
I've been having discussions for ten months. We've had a discussion as a group today. And, you know, there, there was a rendering from last year already, if not before. Uh, maybe that was from twenty-two already, that never got hashed out. I just think it's short-sighted and that's why I'm asking. If, if, if not, then not, but.
Do we have a problem in postponing that motion?
I have a problem postponing it if we're just going to have the same discussion again in two weeks. We're all here, let's discuss it now. I don't have a problem with postponing it if, if somebody's bringing different information for me to consider in two weeks.
I don't think that we're in two weeks, because, and I agree with Corey, I don't think we're going to get the information, at least I'm not going to get it in two weeks, that I would need to think that there is a well-thought-out, purposeful strategic plan for that space. That's what I would like to see. And it sounds like there's been discussions on it, there's been meetings, there's been whatever, but until something is reduced to paper that we can redo, uh, react to and commit to, then I, we have what we got.
And in the interim, we have five, maybe six, seven graduating classes that still don't have access to a multipurpose field and lights. And I think that that's a problem, because even if we do come up with a great rendering and we do have a, a long-term plan, there is a lot happening of students that continue to miss out on access to stuff that they should have had long ago, in my opinion, so I don't know why.
I, I appreciate that, and if I just could just add this in, um, so with the, the, Sharon or Russ, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, if I recall, the, the lead time on turf would not allow us to start this work until next fall. Am I, am I correct? So if the board wanted a month, I don't think that changes our timeline. Am I, am I right on that?
Currently, we, we want to get going on the survey so that we could get a start on it, but if you need, we're going to go, um, as quickly or slowly as you need to to make a good decision, so we can adapt.
So you don't.
I don't have a problem just postponing it for a month, because it's not going to slow anything down. And actually, I was thinking that, uh, the work would start immediately after school, you know, all summer then.
Yeah, it couldn't at this point.
Okay, well, that's another discussion. I don't want to keep that going.
My question is that if we postpone this a month, how does this change what our perspective is for the students now? And moving forward with, like Karen mentioned, getting the, the turf field and the lights and everything else that's needed for the students now. I mean, what's it going to change? Strategic plan, ten years down the road, five years down the road? With two high schools, I mean, it doesn't really change much. That field will always be there, it'll still be available. So I, I don't see what more information is going to change on this, kind of with what Lance said. But if you guys want to postpone a month, fine, but I hope there's more information, at least a strategic plan that we can look at by that time.
Well, I agree with what, uh, you're saying and I agree with what, uh, Pat made in the comment. If we're not going to have anything more to add to this, then we're just postponing, kicking the can down the road. But I, truly, I'm going to come back to the fact that, you know, the, the fields that I have put in always started right at the end of the school year so that you had the summer to get that all in. And then it was placed in by the time fall came around, so that fall sports would be on that synthetic turf and playing already. That's why I don't understand why we're going to be waiting until the fall.
Had we started design six months ago, you're exactly right. Um, we're waiting to start design until we get firm direction on this, because this, this was the one piece from the site package that was held out so that you could make a decision on where that West field was going to go.
They're saying we can't get the, we can't, literally can't get the turf now to start in the spring.
No, that's another, that's another topic that I can.
Well, it's the answer to what the question you just asked.
No, no, the bottom line is you don't know what it's like to go into getting companies coming in. Usually it was about this time that we did that, in order to get it in for the summer so that we didn't miss the, the fall season. So that's why I'm questioning why it's taken so long to do that. Now, I've done it, I know it, and that's why I'm questioning that.
Yeah, it takes about four months, you're exactly right, but we have to survey, design, uh, and all of that was put on hold while you were debating kind of the future of where, of the district configuration.
Debating on the, the future of the configuration of the district. And now because of the school force, well, that's been decided, so now design can work.
Right.
So that's why they're bringing it. But in that time, we should have been talking about flipping the field or not, adding on to tech ed wing. We didn't do any of that. And if you guys don't think that's important, then, okay.
You know, it's not, it's not helpful to, to make a comment like that, because no one here is saying it's important. So what I'm saying is that, um, we're talking about possibly having a stadium-quality field there and apparently at East too, we're not going to do it in one, one of our two high schools. Um, that's so many years down the road that I, I don't see what the purpose is of putting off having a multipurpose field that works now for practices, for games, for lights on the track. And if someday, five years or ten years down the road, there can be some sort of fundraising effort that creates a better facility, then great, we have a, we can make it without a track around it. And we, we have two great fields at the location. And, and maybe we wouldn't have to use turf for the, for the new, the new field if it's reserved for games. I, I don't, I just don't see the, it's not that I don't think it's important, what's the delay?
But I am getting impatient. We're now just spinning on our tires. We're now just saying the same thing for the last fifteen minutes. The motion has been split, we can then take a vote, and that way then you will get your direction so that we can get moving on this. So the motion is out there. Do I have somebody push it? Okay, moving the motion.
This is the motion for the West multipurpose.
Correct.
I'll second it.
Okay. I think we discussed it over enough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Second motion on this, would you?
Sure, let me summarize it. So, this would include the elementary work at Main, Thomas Jefferson, GD Jones, and the sidewalk only at Hawthorne Hills, as well as allowing us to spend up to $400,000 on the secondary tech, uh, device replacement, and it would eliminate footings for the elevator at Wassa West, eliminate the road at Hawthorne Hills, eliminate the parking lot at Hawthorne Hills.
I need.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item number eight, new business. Mr. Uding will share an overview of the cybersecurity, multi-factor identification, and steps the district is taking to address these issues. Thank you. Very interested in this one.
Presenting the staff, you might be the only person.
Well, we, we've been doing this secondary identification, and it's not that tough, I don't think.
No, no, it's not, no. So, again, I appreciate the opportunity to come and share some information with you, and the steps that we're taking with our staff, to help ensure them personally, because everything we share with them, and you, and anybody listening, applies to their personal life. So I would strongly encourage you, do this personally, and if there are some issues with things in the district, let me know, and we'll talk about that. But all of this applies to your personal life, and would be well worth the time implementing that. So, just the goals, again, just to talk to you about this, let you know where we're at with it, to talk about the importance of multi-factor, and the single sign-on that we use, talk a little bit about some of the phishing threats, and really bring it around to, it takes everyone to really harden our system and keep everybody safe. So, just a little bit of what's been happening in the state, and it's not something that will never happen to us. This slide just shows some of the state districts that have been impacted by phishing, and you can see it goes from as big as Kenosha to as small as Tiger Tin. So nobody is immune from these types of attempts. And going to the right there on that slide, you can see the impact when somebody's been hit with phishing or ransomware. The phishing attempt will lead to a ransomware in which they encrypt your data. So, you're one that loss of learning, anywhere from three days to three weeks is the average time that you're going to stop instruction, or you will not be using any of this for instructional purposes. And then a full recovery, where you get all your systems, all your backups back up online, could be anywhere between two and nine months to get that. Our goal would be to have certain systems, the critical systems, back online within 24 hours, and begin processing those things, and then bringing things back up with that. So that's a quick look at around the state, and then I think it's always important to take a look at, well, that's great, that's around the state, what's happening in our district? The one thing I would say, the previous slide, NTC got hit a couple of years ago, and really took a big hit with some ransomware, and they were shut down for a while, might have been about three years ago. So it's local, and statewide, nationwide. So when you think about Wassa, think about, there's about 11,000 publicly available accounts. You can see them online, you can access them, those kinds of things. If we look at our accounts, in a 30-day period, there's about 700, in quotes, would call attacks on an account. Somebody is trying to breach that account, trying to gain access. It could be, when we look at it, a lot of it is overseas, some of it has crossed the country where that's happening. And those 700 attempts are about 300 accounts at any given time in that period will have received an attack. That equates to about 23 accounts a day we're seeing attacks on, and we're monitoring through Azure. They all have failed so far, and if somebody has had a compromised password, it's, we're notified immediately, they are, they're changed, their account's locked until they can get in, and then they set up MFA with that. You can see, too, that on average, we get reported about 24 phishing emails a day. That's just what's reported through some of the systems we have. Those are not ones that people just catch and delete. So I think this is important, because it really showcases to people, it's happening here, we're not immune to it, and we really need to be vigilant and diligent in our efforts to ensure that we continue down the path we have had without an incident. So again, what are, what are we doing? We are about 70% of the way through setting up MFA with all of our staff members. We're currently at John Muir, and then we're moving fully into elementary sites with that. All administrators have had it for a year, long fellow district principals, different departments, the technology department has been using it. The other thing that we do, and you may hear about, is we have some software that allow us to create our own simulated phishing campaign. So we can create an email, make it mirror a phishing email, and then when someone clicks on it, they get a little splash page that says, oh, you've been phished by the Wassa School District, you should have caught this, this, and this, as a way to educate people on what they can see. They are not the most popular things that happen out there, and we, and we understand that. But the other thing that I want you to be aware of is, our only recourse with this system is to create more and more realistic phishing attempts. We started with the easy to pick out, hey, you want a free Starbucks card? Hey, can you buy me an iTunes card? Those kinds of things. But that's not the way of the world anymore. And so, we will begin and have begun phishing or spoofing our own email addresses and department addresses. Spoofing, meaning you've taken that email and you've made something very close to it. And we may even capture topics that are relevant in the district, to say, hey, you know, here's an address that's very close to, say, HR, and you need to set up your wellness program. But then there will be something in that email that gives them away, because phishing campaigns are not done out of the thin air. They research a site, they know what's happening, they know what current topics are, and then they develop their attack on that, and comes through. Our dead giveaway is, we'll never ask you for your password. So if you, as board members, or listening staff members, ever get an email from this district that says, we need your credentials, delete it. We don't. We don't want them, we don't need them. We'll work with you, and we'll just reset your password. We don't, we don't need that. So those are always the dead giveaways. Previously, we went from eight-word, eight, uh, an eight-digit password to 15 now. So it's a 15-digit password with multi-layers that you've all been, had to put in, and that's intentional to break it from personal accounts. I don't, really don't want to use a 15-character, I should, 15-character password on my Amazon account, so that's going to be different. Whereas before, when it was just eight, there was a lot of carryover between personal and professional accounts with the same password. Uh, the one thing I would highlight on is the strict email firewall settings. We've got our email tuned about as tightly as we can to catch and stop phishing emails. Our next step would be to start quarantining attachments, like PDFs or shared links or things like that. It would be an awesome step, because those are the biggest tools people use to get in, but it would really bring things to a grinding halt in the district if every PDF was quarantined. So, we're still working with people on that, and you'll see some of that. So I don't know if there's any questions so far, don't mean to rush through this.
You're fine.
Okay. Just what is multi-factor authentication? You've all been using it, but for others, it's just the need to have a third, a way to say, I am Mr. Uding, I am John Uding. I have my username, I have my password, and then I need something else. It could be another device. You can use biometrics, if you've used your iPhone and you have your facial scan, that's an aspect of it. Our devices in our accounts right now aren't set up for that. So it's just a need that if someone did get your password, they wouldn't have that other way to authenticate and say, I am who I am. So where are we at with our staff? Where we are at with our staff is, we work with them, we, we tell the building, hey, we're coming in, here's the way you can set up MFA for yourself. If you would like some assistance, this is who will be in your building, and you can do that. We strongly, strongly encourage staff members to download on their phone, Android or Apple, a free Microsoft Authenticator app. That is the most convenient way for them to do that, because their cell phone is likely with them more often. It's something that they're not going to misplace. But the real benefit for that is that Microsoft Authenticator app can be used personally. The district does not own it, there's no tie with the district to that, it's solely owned by you and that end user. We have no visibility into it, it's simply a way for them to get that passcode. So my Authenticator app has my district account that it authenticates to, but it's got all my social media and all the other things to it. So the convenience of that is, it's something that keeps them safe in their personal life, too, if they don't already have it. People have to authenticate every seven days, or when they hit a device that hasn't been signed into for seven days. Or if you clear your cache and history with that, you'd have to re-authenticate. We do have a small percentage of users who don't have a cell phone, don't have access to a cell phone, or have other reasons not to use it. And for those staff members, we can offer them a token key generator. It's about that long, it's about that wide, and it would fit on your keychain, and every 30 seconds, it just generates a numeric code that you would use to authenticate. The downfall for that is, all you can use it for is the district account. It's totally a single-use application, whereas the other one people can use on their personal accounts, too. Just real quick, some of the things that we talked to, let me back up. We're going to accelerate pushing MFA out through the elementary buildings, because what's become more relevant or more frequent is a person's account actually getting compromised. And before it's caught, the person who's compromised that grabs the contact list and starts sending out legitimate emails. There's no way to identify that that's a phishing email, because it's coming from, say, my account. It's my address, my name, that person is just simply in the background manipulating the text on that. It happened here. I asked Cassie, Cassie got one from an administrative assistant in a neighboring district, and was going back and forth, and they were watching that hacker for a few minutes, operating and reply to people, saying, yeah, that's a legit email, go ahead and send me that information, before they shut it down with it. The only protection to that is MFA. So when that started happening, then we thought, okay, we've been kind of taking our time and slow roll in it this year, we really can step it up and accelerate that process. And the, the real danger in it is, they're taking your contact list. So if they grab my contact list, Keith would get an email from John Uding. If I'm in a third-grade team, and I have it on, and my partner doesn't, and they get compromised, I will get legitimate emails from that person. So that response is going to happen. They're not easy to pick out, unless you really start dialing down. So they're very dangerous. Those are just two examples we share with staff about watching for links, and then if you ever see anything like that PDF that's asking you to enter your credentials, that's the dead giveaway, that, don't do that. So again, what we share with staff is, for your own benefit, you're best off to clear your cache and history regularly, because all those cookies save all your logons, and if you get breached, they're going to grab all that information, and then they have it. We are working with staff for MFA, and always just being safe and alert. So, I appreciate the time, I'd be glad to take any questions. I know it's a riveting topic, but just wanted you to be aware of what we're doing. If people are asking you questions in the community, hey, what's the district doing, how are you keeping our data safe, or if maybe staff have questions about why we're doing what we're doing with that. So I wanted to empower you with that information also.
Does this impact secondary students right now? You said, did they already have it?
Secondary students don't have it right now. That would be the next step down the road after we get through staff, but some secondary students do have it. When we find a secondary student whose account is under attack heavily or compromised, we work with that person to set up MFA.
Okay, and where I was going with that is that there's obviously some critical mass testing that'll be coming up in the next few months?
Yes.
I would hate to see something derail that, like, we've had some unfortunate things happen before.
Yes.
The mornings of those tests, that really throws things off.
Yeah, the multi-factor, if they've had it, has been working for them, and we would support them anyway, and that's a good point, and we would work directly with that person if it were happening on that morning.
Okay, but there's no planned rollout of this, like before the ACT?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Well, when I say students down the road, that, that's like next year, and you would hear about that. Stephen's Point, interestingly enough, has issued key, token key generators to all of their students, and their students are using MFA, I believe, K through 12. Any other questions? Those are good questions.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the time.
All right, moving on to 8B. Administration, Monk Gardens staff, and Red Granite Governance members, the Education Operations Committee, committee approved and recommended to the full board the approval of Red Granite Charter School to reside at Mark Botanical Gardens. Anything else to add? If not, I'm seeking a motion to approve Red Granite Charter School to reside at Monk Botanical Gardens.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item. Ms. Cartage will present an open enrollment space determination for 2024-25. Is there any additional?
She already did, yeah. So if we're ready.
So it's, I'm seeking a motion to approve the regular and special education non-resident spaces available under open enrollment for the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Anybody with a professional growth and development report to the board? If not, we'll continue to move on with our legislative liaison, Mr. Sillers.
I had the opportunity to speak with Congressman Tiffany on December 17th about situations and potential funding changes for some of our newer refugee students, and was hoping to be able to connect with district staff to, to get stories, to be able to continue that conversation with the congressman at some point in the near future. So that's, I, I also had got opportunity last week to speak with Senator, State Senator Tom Cech, and just pick his brain, but need to follow up with his staff on, on a couple topics as well. And then our, we had a CISA 9 meeting last week, went over some of the resolutions that we're going to be bringing, that is going to be brought forth at convention. We talked as a group about the, kind of the watering, down of teacher qualification requirements. That's kind of one of our resolutions that's going to be brought forward. Actually, no one in the group seemed to be in support of that, so it'll be an interesting discussion at, at the convention. And then, the last CISA 9 legislative discussion, where elected officials had come to, to their office, they talked about the, the district report cards, and how, how CISA can help the districts advance the life-ready skills for students, and what role they would play in that process of helping the districts, that is the main goal of CISA's. And, and then we talked about some other, another license requirement bill that is in committee in the legislature right now, and that bill really revolves around not wanting those lesser levels of competency for our, our teachers in the future. So, that, that's ongoing yet.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Dr. Hiltz, any brief comments?
Really light. I just wanted to thank Ms. Ivy and her second-grade class for this calendar the kids painted these, a picture for each month. It was just really nice, so I told her I would hold it up at the board meeting and say, thank you. That's it.
You could zoom in on that.
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
There you go. Next item. Please put the, they're, we're not, okay, well, you don't have to put that into record. I'm at this point in time seeking a motion to enter closed session to discuss. I'm at this point in time, uh, seeking a motion to enter closed session to discuss, uh, demographer or other consultant RFP discussion and superintendent search firms, RFPs. According to statutes 19.851E for both.
Make the motion. We go into closed?
Second.
All right, need a roll call?
John Creacher? Pat McKee? Cody Nicolai? Jennifer Paoli? Joanna Reyes? Corey Sellers?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Karen Vanderberg? Jim Boucher?
Yes. Thank you very much.